First resident is Suzanne Brown.
Suzanne Brown in Peachtree City. After three days of early voting in the runoff elections, a total of 5,222 Peachtree City residents showed up to vote early, but only 3,027 of those city residents cast a vote in the city council race. That means 55.8% of city residents voting for the senate race also voted in the special municipal runoff. If anyone in this room is okay with that number, then shame on you. It means that 44.2% of the Peachtree City residents who showed up at the polls to vote early walked away without voting in the city council race. Lines are very long for the general runoff and many voters simply walked away without waiting for a second long line to vote in the municipal runoff. This is the same thing that we had happen in the general election. It truly saddens me to report those numbers to you, so again, I urge anyone who walked away without voting in the municipal election to do the research about the two candidates and vote either tomorrow, Friday, December 2nd, at any of the four early voting locations in Fayette County, or on Tuesday, December the 6th. If you only need to vote for the Peachtree City ballot, you can tell them that you only need to stand on that line and cut the other line. I seriously suggest going to the Tyrone location as they have a much lower number of Peachtree City voters who show up there to vote for that runoff election. When I was there on Tuesday, they had very few voters. In fact, there was no waiting for the Peachtree City election there. So if you're just looking to vote for that, get in your car, make the drive to Tyrone, and go vote.
Next person sign up to speak is resident Keith Larson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Keith Larson, I'm a Peachtree City resident. I want you to consider thoughtfully making a motion to direct the city staff to initiate a citizen advisory group or a traffic calming citizen advisory group in 2023 to take up the comprehensive plan action to review the master path plan. Here's why. There are noticeable gaps in the 2022 April update that was published without public comment or even city council approval. For example, there's no public access presently for pedestrians or parking at the Sumberby Woods City Park. There's also no path connectivity to the park. This hinders city maintenance, police, and emergency service response in case of emergency, accesses by crossing private property. This could be resolved with a 700-foot extension of the path from the hot crossing on Rockabye Road to the city easement to the park. There are two path projects that were canceled. Prime Point and Willow Bend side pass were removed as they duplicate adjacent low-speed roads. City speed zones are 30 miles per hour in both those streets. Who would walk their dog, or their kids, or say, "Go ahead, walk on the road in our city on a 30 mile per hour street"? The planned neighborhoods, Longboat, Townsend, and Mill Pond under construction do not have their paths included. And finally, the SR 54 East Crossing Tunnel that will support the new Booth Mill School site is not identified. We should know that fact by now. And it probably will be a tunnel. So we should be clear to our residents what we're building for the 2023 SPOS because it's in the program. Thank you for your consideration.
Agenda changes, council? Minutes, November 17, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Mayor, I move that we approve this November 17, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, item number one, grinding and removal service contract award.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda item, grinding and removal service contract award.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Old agenda items, we have none. New agenda item 122201, police vehicle purchase.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'll be very brief this evening. We're coming tonight to request that we can move forward with the purchase of nine police Explorer interceptor vehicles from Wade Ford for the price of $400,000. Wade Ford holds the state contract pricing for the model year 2023 Ford Explorer units. This money is approved in our current budget of $400,000, and we're just requesting to move forward with the purchase.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns?
I'm very fortunate that the vehicles were available.
It was undertaking.
I was just gonna say, from what I read in the packet initially, seems like you've gone through a great deal of effort to, one, find them, and, two, be able to get them purchased.
Yes, sir. My thanks to the purchasing department and my staff for being very diligent on that. We actually were gonna have to go down a piecemeal route and get some vehicles we really didn't want the specifications on, but it was better to have some vehicles than none. And then we were able to come through with Wade Ford that really helped us out.
The one question I had, I guess it's probably normal, but you went in looking specifically for vehicles that have less than 125,000 miles, so is that typically the limit that you go for? 125,000?
No, sir. That's when we take 125,000 miles is when we rotate the current vehicles off, and they get replaced with the new vehicles.
And then you obviously said the ones that are unrepairable. We don't wanna have something that's sitting in the yard, but thank you for your efforts, chief.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve new agenda item 122201, police vehicle purchase as presented.
In the amount of $400,000?
In the amount of $400,000? Is that the right number?
Yeah.
Even? Yes. For Wade Ford for $400,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. New agenda item 122202, consider intergovernmental agreement 2023 SPOS.
I will also be brief. The SPOS, the memo that's in the packet is pretty thorough on the process that we've been through to get a SPOS list for Peachtree City to provide Fayette County. We did our citizen group through all of this year. Oh, I'm getting, time flies. Through all of this year, and we came up with a great project list that came to council. We changed a few things, not many, and that was approved by council in August, actually in September. What this is doing now is officially entering into an intergovernmental agreement with Fayette County and all the municipalities to, one, hold the SPOS election, and that we will participate in the SPOS. It has the list of projects for the county and all the municipalities in the agreement on an attachment. The expected collections are about $210 million for the whole county over six years. Collections will begin in July of '23 if voters do approve this referendum. And the expected amount to come to Peachtree City is about $67.4 million over that time, which we have budgeted in our project list. This agreement was reviewed by Ted, our city attorney, meets all the legal requirements. I'm pretty sure it's almost exactly the same as the agreement we did for the 2017 SPOS, with just the numbers changed to represent the new figures for this term. That's all I'll go over tonight, unless you have specific questions.
Council?
No questions.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
First of all, since this is the first one I've read, I had one point in time I wanted to be an attorney after reading this agreement. I'm glad I turned that down and went for being an engineer. The only question I have, Madam Mayor and council, is that in several places, you know, the date of the election is left blank. At this point in time, we don't have a date that we could put in?
We do, but it's the county's agreement. They're gonna fill it in.
That's correct. So they're anticipating it to be March 23rd. However, they have to call for the special election, and prior to the call for the special election, we'll make sure that the dates are filled in.
Thank you very much. That's my only question.
The dates of the special election are set by statute, so.
Yes.
It's set by statute, you said?
Yes.
Yeah. And the date of the collections is also left blank in here, but it would be July of '23 because the current SPOS ends in June '23.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve new agenda item 122202, the intergovernmental agreement of the 2023 SPOS.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Public hearings, we have none. Council staff topics, we'll start with the financial update.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. We have a PowerPoint. I'll too, we'll try to be brief, but try to recap a year's worth of financial information, so be as brief as possible, put it that way. So we do this every year, try to give unaudited results. We have the auditors coming, I think, in January, but we have enough information now to kinda give a report about how we ended up the fiscal year last year, ended September 30th. And the drill is to see, well, how did we do versus what we projected we would do on revenues and expenses when, at the time, we formulated the FY 2023 budget back in June. So did we meet our expectations? Are there any adjustments necessary? Do we have sufficient funding to proceed with the COLA that was budgeted for this fiscal year? What unbudgeted projects may we have funding available for, as not all of them made it into the adopted budget? And then wanna end off with the status of the SPOS collections and some other funds. So those are some of the questions we're looking to answer and will some point along the way. So just some of the highlights for FY 2022. We did budget conservatively on the revenues because of economic uncertainty. We were in a period of economic recovery still, so we did fortunately see revenues coming in higher than what we'd anticipated. We did still have personnel impacts, many vacancies, and recruiting difficulties. It's like a broken record you've been hearing over, and that's persisting right now. We'll get into that in a few minutes. Supply chain impacts, inflation, we have seen some improvement in that. We just saw, we're glad we're able to order some police vehicles, keep those things moving along. Overall, results were not as financially severe as anticipated when we had prepared the budget for last year. Turned out better than anticipated. However, you know, we do proceed with, I call guarded, optimism. We still have ongoing impacts, things going on in the economy, rising interest rates. We'll mention a little about that in a few minutes. Could be a double-edged sword. There is some slowdown in economic growth. Again, that's good and bad in that as well. And we have seen some tech sector layoffs lately in the economy. So jumping right into revenues, you can see we have it all by the major categories along here. Wanted to drop right down to this number here. I was told long ago that if you can project within 5%, you're doing pretty good, so just getting to the bottom line, we had, oh, written ahead, we're within 4.3% on revenues. As you can see, the biggest revenue category is taxes. Even though it's a small percent, we came in ahead, it's the biggest number. This is all your property taxes, LOST, franchise tax, insurance premium tax, so on. We wanted also to point out the investment income, as I just mentioned, the double-edged sword of the rising interest rates. It's, you know, if we're going out for borrowing, of course, it's not good, but we have been seeing significantly increased revenues on our investments. I think we just, Kelly just bought another one today for one year for 5%, which is unheard of just, you know, a year ago. So we'll be back to seeing some six-digit income on our investment income in the next couple of years. Hotel motel tax also is another, one where we came in ahead, and you're probably gonna see a budget adjustment before the end of the year to go ahead and give some breathing room to the CDB particularly, being that we have the better-than-projected results there. Again, overall, came in 4.3% ahead of what we had projected back around budget time, translates to about $1.8 million. On the expense side, again, I did the same thing. If you wanna focus just to the left of this column, you can see we came in 3.1% to the good on expenses, the actual versus what we had projected back in June. So the biggest category, of course, is your departmental operating expenses. I did put some notes out to the side, though, on this one, so, and this is a good illustration of the supply chain issues that I just mentioned, where we had about $1.12 million spent, less than what we had projected we would. But then again, we had almost a million dollars of that as carryover appropriations, things that we didn't spend and landed up having to be carried over into this fiscal year.
Hey, Paul, would the $400,000 that was just approved for police vehicles affect that then?
No, that was, we budgeted those for this fiscal year.
Okay. Isn't that this fiscal year?
No, this is a recap of FY 2022.
Okay.
Actually, now that I look at it, that column should be unaudited, FY 2022. Sorry, that's compared to what we projected, unaudited actual FY 2022. I looked at this five times and just noticing that now. But yeah, this is all pertaining to how we finished off last fiscal year.
Understand.
So this fiscal year, we had budgeted for 13 police vehicles. I think we had already put in order for four, and then tonight, we put in order for the other nine. So we have all 13 ordered. The question is, will we even get them by year end, depending on supply chain? But they were all budgeted, and it won't affect these numbers. We did have some contingency money rolled over, but as you can see, we had underestimated how much we needed for capital because we had the Stagecoach Road, first phase of that, that we had to pull out of reserves. So overall, when you consider the adjustments to, you know, this $1.3 million, we came a lot closer, like a fraction of a percent, to what really is the actual. Trying to pull it all together, like I said, we had about $1.8 million to the good on revenue, the $1.3 million to the good on expense. And then when you look at the use of reserves, we had anticipated that we were gonna use just about $100,000 of cash reserves. We ended up going up by $3 million. So that was a positive variance of about 3.1 million there.
I like your use of terms, favorable.
Yeah, I like the word favorable, talking projections, and being within 5%. By the way, you can see if you're 5% the other way, it's not so good, but fortunately, within 5% to the good on both. So taking that favorable variance on the fund balance projection, like I said, there were some commitments against that. We had the carryover appropriations. These were things that we did since October 1st. You might even notice these last two were on the last council agenda. So that effectively brings that surplus down to about $2 million, you know, on the use of reserves, or that increase of reserves. So where are we on fund balance? We started out last fiscal year with $25.5 million. As I just mentioned, it went up at $3 million to 28.6, almost. We had a number of commitments. This year, we budgeted to use 571,000 of cash reserves to balance the FY 2023 budget. Again, we had the carryovers. We had about $0.5 million we spent in inventory and prepaid, as non-spendable fund balance. And then again, the things that we had done since October 1st to commit funds. So we adjust for these. We have uncommitted reserves of about 26.3 million, or about 54% based on a current expense budget of $48,255,000. I'm gonna try to show this in perspective with the five-year model in a few minutes, but first one, just mentioned a few of the upcoming financial matters. Again, we have recruitment, retention strategy, things we wanna look at, deal with the persistent vacancies. We have some things that we've already discussed, maybe even with council, how we deal with competing with labor, the neighboring jurisdictions, keeping up with the Joneses. We're kinda waiting for the new city manager to discuss some of those things. We're gonna bring it up with the budget for next year or earlier. You know, the police mentioned even yesterday or a couple days ago that they were now losing to Coweta County, you know, so we'd like to definitely get on that strategy and come back with some things probably sooner rather than later to try to help combat that. We do have some unfunded building maintenance and other projects, talk about in a minute. Then there's the issue of the renewal of the SPOS and spend out of the ARPA funds, and as I mentioned, you know, the rising interest rates. So for the unfilled position, this was a snapshot of a couple weeks ago, maybe yesterday's news. I hear we're already, now we're up to 10 police officers.
Right.
And another three or four or so about coming up eligible for retirement in the next few months, so that could exacerbate the problem, depending what happens with them. Firefighters were at three. Clint, are we still? He went up one, yeah, we're at four now. So I thought, we did fill one of the GIS positions, but with an internal candidate, so we're up one here and down one there, so, down one in Stormwater. Again, this is a problem that's persisted since last fiscal year and did contribute to some of the unanticipated surplus at year end by having those vacancies. So it's a bad way to get surplus, you know, because you're not executing, you know, you have these unfilled positions. We mentioned potential projects. We don't wanna get into a whole discussion on that tonight, but just listed like the first four there, particular, three or, two, three, four particular projects. And then the last bullet, Justin's asked the department heads to submit a list, and we've compiled a big list of projects. The way we've been funding for capital projects, you know, we had the facilities bonds in the past, you know, we did two back-to-back facilities bonds, $3 million each. One of them we had paid off, and the debt service on that was about $350,000 a year. So we took that $350,000, when that paid off, and just put it in as cash. So we're gonna now spend $350,000 cash on capital projects. Problem is, you're trying to fit, you know, a number to your projects where the projects may be more or less than that amount. So after a couple of years of doing that, $350,000, $350,000, knocking out what you can. Am I pardoning?
They're never less.
Yeah, they're never less. That's it. So starting to snowball a little bit and pull the, you know, list together. Again, we're looking forward to the new city manager coming in, so we all sit and look it over. He's got that project planning background. Wanna evaluate our other funding sources that are all out there. We still have some facility bond money left to spend from what we did last year. We have impact fee money we have to spend. There are some reserves, which again, we're trying to watch what we do with those, and because of the SPOS, we wanna know what's gonna happen in March.
I'd like to make sure, I don't mean to interrupt, but I wanna make sure that we don't get into a position like so many years ago, where the city was run down and then had decided to go out and borrow a bunch of money because we didn't maintain things.
Absolutely.
Stitching time saves nine. I heard that a long time ago, so.
Agreed. I think that's why, you know, I've put, I have a massive spreadsheet with different things that kinda we need to prioritize and go through and need to look at, and that's, I've talked with Bob, you know, with Bob coming in, I've spoke with him on the phone, and it's, you know, we're gonna be looking at all that stuff and plan. That's, my goal is to plan all this out and not be caught with, hey, we need $3 million to fix things.
I just, since we've interrupted, if you back up a slide, aren't many of those potential projects included in SPOS?
Well, that's just it, too, yeah, we'll be looking at.
So by March, we may have some of those. Hopefully, we get the right vote, we'll have some of those covered, but you can't count on that, so I certainly agree with Phil.
Exactly. And this whole budget and the model, we're about to show, the five-year model is based on, you know, not counting your chickens before they're hatched. It's figures on no SPOS, so.
Now, SPOS is not supposed to be used for general maintenance, correct?
True.
Correct, but some of these projects, we, some of these projects that you could say are maintenance projects because they're on existing structures can also be considered capital because they're.
Renovations.
Yeah, they're adding on to.
Because we've talked about that tennis center, you know, like the air conditioning before, I think, I thought we, at the time, the SPOS team talked to us that the certain things at the tennis center could be considered capital, but you're right, it can't be used for maintenance, as far as I know.
Correct.
Okay. So just the current status of the 2017 SPOS. Up top, you can see we had originally expected about less than $45.5 million for the Phase One, the original six-year SPOS. That was a percentage from the county, our percentage of the county wide SPOS, it's about 32.25%. So through this point in time, we had expected to collect about $39.5 million of that $45.4 million. We've actually collected over $49.1 million of it. So the current surplus right now is up at about $9.6 million, 24% or so. We still have several months left to collect, so we're anticipating, you know, at the end of the six years, we'll have about $11 million for Tier Two projects, or I've collected a total of about $56.5 million as opposed to the original estimate of $45.472. So the original estimate for Tier Two projects, you can see that out on the website in that document we had. document we have out there for the 2017 SPOST, said that we're going to have about $6.5 million. I went ahead and ran an inflation calculator on that and said, well, what is that in today's dollars, considering what's happened with inflation the past few years? So that's $6.5 million, you know, estimated back then, has buying power today of about $8 million. As I just said on the last slide, we're estimating that at the end of, you know, the collection in the end of June, we'll have collected over $11 billion. So even when you adjust for inflation, we should still end up, you know, about $3 million to the good, you know, for the Tier Two projects. And that's mostly all additional paving. So I can, you know, get you, you know, more paving done for that money.
I believe Mr. Borowski said that we'd get an update from the evaluation of the roads at some point. Sorry, Jonathan, put you on the spot there.
The IMS man's here.
Right now, they're currently 25% complete with the QAQC portion. So I expect to see something hopefully at the beginning of the year.
25% for the microphone. 25% complete for the QAQC, which means the whole rating?
So they've collected all the data and done all the surveys. So now they're in the process of just making sure what was collected by the machines are accurate. They'll review video footage and check those numbers for the whole system.
And then at that point, we can decide.
Take a look.
Yeah, for the paving, right, where we're at on the paving. Because for so many years, I remember, we were way behind.
Yeah.
We're getting there.
It informs everything we do.
Paul, when I read through this agreement that we've had, like I said, almost sorry I read it all, but honestly, didn't it say, it talked about, really talked about if there was a municipality that went out of business and so on. But it talked about, you put up a slide that they were going to be getting so much more money than we anticipated. And then it runs for six years. And at some point, you know, if there's money left over, that stays with us. That doesn't go back to the county.
Correct. That's why you have the Tier Two. It would, it would then be available for those Tier Two projects.
And any overages of Tier One.
Yeah.
Which at this point, six years into collections, a lot of the projects we're doing are going to be over that original estimate because they were estimated six years ago.
My point was at the end of six years, what's happened?
We keep it.
We get to keep it. Okay.
For completion of projects that are still in progress and then any Tier Two projects.
As I remember, that's why we set it up so that we had so many projects to make sure that we didn't, oh wow, we've done all the projects. And then at that point, it would go back to the county. Is that right? And then they could decide what to do with it, including paying off their debt.
They could pay down debt.
Which is all of our debt.
Yes.
Well, Ted, whether you wrote that or not, it was very informative to read.
The county attorney wrote that and it was.
Dennis Davenport wrote that?
He did.
All righty.
So I know everyone's brain kind of freezes when I put up the five-year model, but it's.
Actually, you got to read it from this side.
Try to walk you through it. Really, the first column really just shows the adopted budget for last fiscal year, how we had, you know, figured on, originally figured on using 553,000 of cash reserves. This is the unaudited actual that we just talked about through the beginning of this discussion, where we actually, our reserves increased by $3 million. And here's where we talked about the estimated ending fund balance, 54%. This is what we adopted for this year. Again, I had mentioned, you know, how we have 571,000 use of this reserve to balance next year's budget. So far, what we're projecting for FY 2023, and we're very early in the year, because we adjusted the revenue projections based on what we had, how we ended up the year. Already, we're showing that we may not spend that much of fund balance. That's other things equal. But this is still very early in the fiscal year. You know, we'll come back at budget and, you know, all these numbers can change. But the key point here is looking into the FY 2024 and, you know, what happens with the SPOST. Because if the SPOST does pass, this will go away, that .8 mils. And this number here, which is really for capital, includes paving, will go down considerably to offset, you know, that tax revenue. So we basically said, you know, no more SPOST, add more money here to pay for paving, charge another .8 mils. From what we just saw on the Tier Two projects and how much, you know, extra we have, it's a good possibility, depending how fast they move on paving, that if for some reason the SPOST doesn't pass, we may be able to stretch that Tier Two money out another year and be able to push this mileage increase back a year to FY 25. And then by then see, you know, maybe the county even come back with another SPOST for a vote. Hopefully, things will go well. It'll, it'll pass and this will go away. That's, you know, we hope, but for now, we have to plan for the worst. And that's what we have as far as the five-year model for now. Any questions on this? So go review those questions that we had at the beginning. Did we meet the expectations? Were any corrective action adjustments necessary? So yes, we obviously did meet the projections, exceeded them. So no corrective action is necessary, other than the fact that, like I said, we'll be coming back with a budget adjustment to increase hotel motel tax and give some relief for the CDB and also for the city share of that. Yes, of course, we do have sufficient funding to proceed with the COLA that was budgeted for FY 2023. So we're going to plan on go ahead and on the next payday, implement that, have that be reflected in the next payday, that 5% COLA that was planned for, for this fiscal year. Again, we had mentioned unbudgeted projects. What might we have money available for? Again, we want to look at the reserves, but it's not just general fund cash reserves. Again, it's the other impact fees, bond money, ARPA money, what have you, to see how we can fund all those listed projects after we get them prioritized. And again, you know, proceed cautiously until we know what happens with the SPOST vote. And kind of already covered that, you know, that the SPOST is coming in, ahead of projections for that Tier Two. And we're waiting on that 2023 referendum results. That's all I had. And if you have any other questions or discussion at this time?
I have a quick question. Grant match for a library elevator. Did we, did we already approve that match?
Yes.
We did. And so is there a status on that or is that a given?
Yeah, I know.
The app, is it the app? From my knowledge, the application period is at the beginning of '23. So we went, we approved that if we are, if we get the grant, which we have not applied for yet, it opens in '23, we will match it.
We see.
We have to show that we have.
Got it.
We have to show them that we have the funds to match.
Oh, thank you.
What is the cost?
We expect, what was the?
Remember what she said.
Go back to your 50%, whatever the number was.
Well, don't worry about it. 93.
93,000.
Okay, whatever the number was, it's times two.
Double is about 180, 990.
180, something thousand.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, ma'am.
Good, a lot better shape than we were a few years ago, are we not?
Yeah.
Good.
Pretty happy that we're better than projected and then come back tonight and say that we.
In a lot better shape than many other cities, specifically due to COVID or whatever else you want to say. But, you know, we weathered the storm.
You always give a great presentation, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, any other counsel staff topics?
I've got something that I experienced today that maybe, it's going to be a total surprise, Justin, guess what? Or, and/or Jasmine. I was at Oak Grove Elementary today and volunteering on their council. And we visited a classroom and I watched this kindergarten teacher. She was a fantastic teacher. And so I'm wondering if our communications could get together with the Fayette County School Board Communications and, and share the content, because people move here for the education. And if they were looking at our website or something and saw, I want to say this teacher in action, it would certainly promote our city. So is there a way that we can, again, co-partner with, I think it's Chris Dunn, who is the communications person for the school board? I'm not sure. But is that something we could consider?
That's correct. I don't know how to say her last name. That's correct. So we already do contact them and we do share things on our page. Or if we hear about a student or a teacher that has some special recognition, we typically share it, not necessarily on our page, but on social media or added to our newsletter. So that's something that we currently do. Unfortunately, the school system stated that if we wanted to share things specifically related to Peachtree City, it has to be things that are relevant to all of the residents in Fayette County, not only just the students of Peachtree City. So for example, maybe hometown holidays where anybody can come to the event, we can share that. But something like our property taxes, sharing it to parents, that wouldn't be something that they would share. So we do currently already have a contact, Ms. Melinda.
Barry Drysp.
Yes. She is the contact that we utilize and we do send things over and they choose whether things they, they like to share and then we pull stuff from their sites as well to share.
So for us to share something about the schools, it has to be something that, not just the Peachtree City schools, it would have to be something considered countywide?
Vice versa. If this, correct, reverse. If the school was to share stuff that we put out, they stated it would be things that are specifically relating to all members in Fayette County, all residents in Fayette County, not just Peachtree City. But we.
Let's talk about the other direction.
Correct. We pull things all the time and post. I think they just recently had a student that was recognized for fashion designing. So we, we posted that. There was a teacher that was recognized. So we do post things regularly within our newsletter or on our social media site from Fayette County schools.
Okay.
But you couldn't just recognize a person for doing an outstanding job. It sounds like.
Again, I just, I'm just looking at a way to market our brand, Peachtree City. How do we market that? Part of it is the school board, right? And of course, our police department and fire department. I mean, it's a, it's a bargain to live here. I feel that way still, even, even though I don't have kids in school anymore, but.
Now, we, we can share specific things from Peachtree City schools.
That was a good idea, Phil.
If they share ours, it has to be relevant to the whole county.
And we do. We share things, especially Peachtree City schools. We usually share acknowledgements and recognition.
Awesome. And speaking of hometown holiday, Saturday evening starts at 5:00 out at Drakefield and the tree lighting is 7:00 PM. And on Saturday also, Santa is coming to Pascal, Pascal Fire Station from 10:00 AM until 1:00. And it is a food drive and canned food drive and toy drive, correct?
Correct.
Come on out. Santa's coming. Anything else? All right. Do we have executive session?
We do. We need to discuss all three this evening, litigation, real estate and personnel.
And may I move that we adjourn to executive session for pending or threatened litigation, real estate and personnel.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session.